Good evening and welcome to the August 11th Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm, exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not block the elevators and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we do ask that everyone please silence your cellphones, and we'll have Councilmember Gregory lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Godlike religion of its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregory. This time, we'll take a brief moment of silence before we start our meeting. Thank you. This time, we'll turn it over to the clerk, the circuit clerk, the office of the clerket, circuit clerk, sorry, to start with our swearing-ins for three of our members of our city.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashna Turnbull. I'm the Deputy Clerk of Court. Mr. McAllister could not be here today, so it's my pleasure to administer these oaths tonight. So can I have Alan Swiger, or is it Swigger?
Swiger.
Swiger.
Swagger like swagger. That's fine.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Alan Swiger.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Deputy City Administrator for the City of Salisbury.
Deputy City Administrator for the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you. Congratulations. That top copy there, and then there's a copy. Thank you. May I have Michael Lowe? Make it a little easier for me to be right there, so we're just gonna go straight down. All right? So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Michael Lowe.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Director of Procurement for the City of Salisbury.
Director of Procurement for the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. And may I have Stefan Feliciano? May I have you raise your right hand? And I want you to repeat after me. I, Stefan Feliciano.
Stefan Feliciano.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
The Election Board for the City of Salisbury.
The Election Board for the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. Perfect. Thank you. May I be excused? Hey, I'm sorry. That concludes my matter before the council. May I be excused?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Yes. And again, thank you all for your service. We greatly appreciate it. Congratulations to you all. At this time, we turn it over to the members of the Salisbury Police Department for a special presentation to the family of Ryan Mitchell. And we invite the family up to the podium as well.
Sir, everybody, this is Olivia and Gillian. These are the twin daughters of our Senior Corporal Ryan Mitchell, who we lost on June 20th unexpectedly. We have a couple of words for you. I'd like to read this one. This is actually from the Maryland General Assembly. Okay? And this is signed by Senator Meredith Croza and Senator Johnny Motts, respectfully District 37 and 38. And it reads in memorandum, hereby known to all that Senior Corporal Ryan Mitchell, Salisbury Police Department, loving memory and deep appreciation of dedicated law enforcement services to the City of Salisbury and the State of Maryland. And this is signed 20 June 2025. And we have a duplicate coming, but I'm gonna present this to you now. All right. It's not over yet. Awards just keep on coming. So I'm gonna hand up.
Take this from me.
Let me give you each one of these. Okay? And, uh, thank you. So generally, when someone retires from the police department, and Ryan did just shy of 30 years of service, so we thought it appropriate to have these shadow boxes displayed, which contains to each of you the awards that Ryan was awarded during his career, which contains a Criminal Investigation Unit Citation, a Tactical Team Unit Citation, Educational Achievement Award, Commendation Medal, 30-Year Service Pen, as well as Silver Star. Thank you. All right, this is a special presentation. All right, so, a little unusual again. Ryan served just prior to 1995, in April and May, just before he was hired by the Salisbury Police Department, served as a seasonal police officer with the Ocean City Police Department. And on behalf of Ocean City, we want to present this to you for his service in April and May of 201995, rather, or service. Thank you so much, and just on behalf of Salisbury Police Department, we certainly miss your dad immensely. Hard shoes to fill, and we will always be here for you. As I mentioned, all you need to do is pick up the phone or phone call away. Thank you. All right, we can get some pictures. Mary, do you wanna?
I'm good. Okay. I've got a little short right now.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, members, for, of course, honoring Ryan Mitchell and, of course, our thoughts and our continued prayers with his family to continually get over, to get to during this difficult time, so, of course. You all again. All right, we'll shift gears just a little bit. We're gonna turn it over to our City Clerk, Ms. English, to review tonight's agenda.
Good evening, council. On the agenda this evening, we have Award of Bids, Declaration of Surplus, five Resolutions, and five Ordinances.
Ms. English. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. We will now invite our newly sworn-in Director of Procurement, Mr. Michael Lowe, for our Award of Bids.
Our newly mented.
Yeah.
It's official.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Freshen this way.
Good evening, council.
Good evening. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the Award of Bids for reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lowe. Mr. Michael Lowe.
All right. For Award of Bids, the Department of Procurement seeks Award of Bid approval from the City of Salisbury Council for the solicitations as defined herein. The city followed required bidding practices as defined by the City of Salisbury's Charter and Municipal Code of Ordinances. Publicly posted the solicitations for the city's competitively bid procurements on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, Planet Bids, the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. The first item is RFP 25-105. This is the Deferred Compensation 457B Plan Administration for the Department of Human Resources. The scope of work is deferred compensation plan for the city employees. Bids were released in March and opened in April, a total of five bids received. The highest-ranked responsible and responsive vendor is Lincoln Financial Group. The total savings per year is about $7,000, with increased in-service days for employees. That's the days that they come on-site and sit with employees and explain the plans. And the plan is funded by the plan assets. The contract includes a renewal clause. The city reserves the right to renew all our portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract, four additional one-year terms contingent upon mutual agreement of both parties. The second bid I have on the agenda is RFP A-25-111. This is Construction Administration and Inspection Services for the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Scope of work entails various services related to construction administration and inspection services. Bids were released in April. We opened them in May. We had a total of nine responses. Two highest-ranked responsive and responsible vendors are recommended for award, RK&amp;K and Wallace &amp; Montgomery. The GL accounts that fund this work are taken from the various project pools with whatever project they're working on at the time. This contract includes a renewal clause. The city reserves the right to renew all our portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract for four one-year terms contingent upon mutual agreement in the city and the vendor. And the last item I have on Award of Bids is ITB 26-101. This is the Park Raw Water Main Extension for the Department of Water Works. The scope of work entails water main installation near the park water treatment plant in the city park. Bids were released in May. We opened bids in July, and we had a total of six bids, and the bid totals are listed in your packet. The lowest-priced responsive and responsible vendor is Allen Myers MD Incorporated out of Faulston, Maryland. Total base bid, $1,838,500, and it's funded by the three project accounts shown in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Council, any questions for Mr. Lowe?
None.
The only, I'm just trying to make sure I didn't, yeah, the only question I have is for the RFP, the A-25-111 for the Construction Administration. What was the, I know that the other ones were the lowest and kind of best, but I know it's described as, the criteria was in the RFP, but can you just?
So it works, the services for that work on an hourly rate basis. We negotiated with the two highest ranked. That process was qualifications-based. We didn't ask for pricing initially, selected the two highest firms, and then asked for pricing and negotiated from there, and it's hourly rates for a project manager and inspector and various other services related to that.
Great. Thank you for that. Hearing other questions, all those in favor to approve the Award of Bids as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the reading of the Declaration of Surplus.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lowe?
Pursuant SC 16-8, sale and other disposition of surplus obsolete or unused property on the Salisbury, all right, that's weird, of the Salisbury Charter, I am requesting approval from the City Council to declare the following items as surplus. For the Salisbury Fire Department, eight air track intubation cameras. Method of disposal will be donation to a mutual aid department or departments. And for Salisbury Police Department, there are 59 ballistic vest panels and 13 trauma panels. Method of disposal, the vest will be sent to a ballistic vest recycler to manage the disposal in a proper manner.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Council, any questions? No. Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the Declaration of Surplus, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This time, I entertain a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3417.
So moved. Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution Number 3417 is appointing John Sater to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending August 2028.
All those in favor to approve Resolution Number 3417, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3418.
So moved. Second.
Resolution Number 3418, appointing Jessica Chidams to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending August 2028.
All those in favor to approve Resolution Number 3418, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3419.
So moved. Second.
Resolution Number 3419, appointing Brian Bergen-Arendt to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending August 2028.
All those in favor to approve Resolution Number 3419, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3420.
So moved. Second.
Resolution Number 3420, appointing Nancy Mitchell to the Public Art Committee for term ending August 2028.
All those in favor to approve Resolution Number 3420, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye.
Any needs?
Also, our foot lard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3421.
So moved. Second.
Resolution 3421, appointing Shimick Edwards to the Youth Development Advisory Committee for term ending August 2028.
All those in favor to approve Resolution Number 3421, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. English. This time, we pivot to our ordinances for this evening. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2947 for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Ordinance Number 2947. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending Chapter 8.11 of the Salisbury City Code entitled "The Fire Prevention Code" to adopt a requirement for a permit from the City Fire Marshal for wholesale and retail sale of ground-based sparkling devices within the City of Salisbury. As you mentioned, it's before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. All those in favor to approve ordinance Number 2947, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye, and the ordinance has been approved. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2948 for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2948, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept a $500 donation from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore to fund a garden planting at Anne Street Village. Before you tonight for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor to approve ordinance Number 2948, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye, and ordinance Number 2948 has been approved. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2949 for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2949, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending the Salisbury City Code to create a new Salisbury Planning Commission independent from that of Wycomico County. Before you tonight for second reading, no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor to approve ordinance Number 2949, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2949 has been approved. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2950 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2950, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending the grant agreement with the State of Maryland's Office of Opioid Overdose, I'm sorry, overdose response from $542,000 to $623,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Fire Department. Before you tonight for first reading.
All those in favor to approve ordinance Number 2950 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2951 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2951, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to approve a budget amendment of the grant fund budget to appropriate funds received from Wycomico County in the amount of $150,000 following the dissolution of the multi-jurisdictional Wycomico County Narcotics Task Force. Before you tonight for first reading.
All those in favor to approve ordinance Number 2951, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye. That concludes the ordinance portion of tonight's meeting. We will pivot to our public comments portion. Again, those wishing to speak, please go to the podium. If you wouldn't mind stating your name, and if you are a city resident, and you will have three minutes to speak. And there is no particular order. Welcome you to the podium. All right, second call for public comments on any topic this evening.
Hi, Riley Smith, Salisbury. Because of, I have a proposal. Because of the cost-benefit usage failures, which are evident by looking at past spending and current proposed spending and just watching the non-usage by cyclists, I propose a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee be disbanded and dissolved. It was a communist-like idea which worked in red China before people had cars or larger European city sightseeing centers, but not here. We have cars, and we've lost the only sightseeing center, the Ward Museum. And we have transportation that works in cold weather, hot weather, snow, and rain. College students rarely ride bicycles. Bicycles are more of an exercise and enjoyment modem for elitists. I know that at least all but one council member sharing or blind followers of party agenda, and the mayor, of course, and do not care about the people's pocketbook or common sense. I won't even mention the cost of rental bicycle failures that the city was engaged in and the scooter debacle. Also, last session, we were discussing fire and EMS calls. I gleaned from the 2024 audit financial statements, there was a total of 17,026 calls for both. Lines for fire EMS expense audit were $12,48,210. That means averaging each EMS or fire truck call costs $708. And so I broke down everything from what the fire department had given us, and I called the mayor's office and, just out of curiosity, asked what his figure was, and it was within $50 of what I came up with, thanks to the fire department. Good job, Mr. Mayor. You're a true, you represent democracy perfectly. I'm joking. This is a republic, not a democracy, as opposed to the thinking of 85% of Maryland. How much did the city get reimbursed by the county? On Monday, August 25th, on 4th, and this is a true story, 2025 is at the end of South Boulevard and Route 13 at the light. There was what appeared to be one homeless man sitting on the sidewalk where the construction of the Chick-fil-A was being built. At that time, there were three city police cars, two state police cars, three city bureaucratic types, and city pickup. I guess the people aren't allowed to move arrest.
Right. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else wishing to speak on any topic this evening? Seeing none, the time is 6:26. This legislative session is adjourned. We will convene into work session. Our first item for, on the agenda, is a presentation for the Adopt a Road program with Mr. Dave Chittington. Invite you up to the... Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I never got to sit in this seat. This is great. I feel like the relative that has come to Thanksgiving dinner two days before and doesn't leave until the Monday after.
Yes.
That's how many times I feel I've been here. But again, with the resolution that you all have given us to the Wycomico Presbyterian Church, I certainly appreciate your confidence in this program. It's a program that I know will benefit the city in many ways. I have been in touch with Mark Edinburgh, and he has given me a list of streets that are in desperate need of care and adoption. But with the City Council's approval and the mayor, I would like to propose that we would like to take over Fitzwater Street coming from Mill out to Pemberton Drive on both sides. And that would be where we would be placing our Adopt a Road sign that you so graciously gave us the other night. The program is something, as I mentioned, is very easy, very, very easy to understand. It's a program that I have many documents from the past from our Environmental Commission back in Waterford Township, where we've made it from our environmental commission back in Waterford Township where we've made it very successful. I have whole harmless forms that we would just, I could forward to you, and you can just substitute the word Waterford Township to Salisbury. I also have a list of some of the items that we will be bringing to our cleanups and instruction as far as, you know, also having first aid kits onboard with our congregation, what to pick up, what not to pick up, medical waste, anything that has to do with any drug, anything with sharp glass, batteries, especially car batteries, things that would cause anybody natural harm. So it would be announced to the group prior, and I think once they get it going in our four to six cleanups a year up to this mile-plus that we would be maintaining in our Adopt a Road, I think they'll all get that. So that will all be in writing. The question I also had was, once we do our cleanups, I have documentation from the past where we would record our volunteers as far as who's coming out that day, how much litter was collected, bags such. Who do I give that to? Would I give it to Zack White? Would I give it to the city? Do you want to know? We will be, you know, doing this work. I just want to make sure that it is documented in the right place.
Absolutely.
And I guess the final thing was, I had been in a conversation with Christine Main from Troop 817, and I believe that the troop wishes to do their own Adopt a Road as of a half an hour ago when I spoke to her. We do not know how, when we presented this program back in January, how they are now on the church sign, because they will not be coming out to Fitzwater. So they're going to be in the future coming out to whatever road that they wish to do or whatever road that Mark sends them to, and Christine's big in the green team. So I wanted to know, how would we move forward to not post a sign that says that the scouts are going to be with us when they're not?
So, and so we talked about this at our last kind of, you know, council and administration meeting, all your questions that you had in legal, they're looking over, make sure that we have a document. We appreciate your template. We went through with legal, just make sure that the volunteers are signed off, so they have that and working with that.
Okay.
In administration, they will, they're going to have a signup link similar to if folks are willing to volunteer for any board or commission, they're going to have a link on the website so that people, persons or organizations can sign up. So we'll send it directly to the troops so that they can sign up for their own, whatever street they choose. And again, you've done some work for us with the list of streets, so thank you for that.
Sure.
But administration, if you want to speak to anything that we spoke about at our last meeting that will make this easier for folks, but they're working on the kind of nuts and bolts of everything there so we can get this broadcast on the website. So Alan, I don't know if you want to, Mr. Swagger?
Sure, yeah. There is an online form that exists with DID right now that's for just cleanup in general. So we're going to revise that to actually fit this program, because we do feel like it's going to get a lot of traction, and the more we keep bringing it to light, the more we're excited to work with you and the groups. I would actually default some of the questions back to you as we go through this process of building out this kind of formality so people can, you know, be engaged. We love to hear that we're doing it right.
Yeah.
And you have a lot of documents that, you know, we're sifting through in different municipalities. So like you said, it's not cumbersome, but we do want to create the process so people know how to interact in it, so.
Well, again, it's a very simple project, and I explained to Ms. English, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. It's something that we're just trying to bring down here to Maryland that has certainly worked in the past. And I, the only other question was, as far as posting the sign whenever it is ready, would it be okay with the city to go onto an existing post other than a stop sign? There is an exile sign advertisement down there, or would the city want to put in their own post into the ground?
Yeah, great question. We'll probably put our own post in the ground when that time comes. We'll work with the field ops team to do that.
Okay.
But we want to do it right. We want to make a big deal out of it. So whenever you guys do a cleanup, there's some coordination there. Make sure we have the sign ready and prepared and, you know.
Yes. Fantastic. Well, again, the congregation from the Wycomico Church, we appreciate, again, all of your help in getting this through, and I am already starting to solicit additional groups that would be taking over additional roads and adoption. So we've got the ball rolling, and I think it's a wonderful thing. So I thank you all for all of your cooperation.
And I'm not sure if you've seen, a couple news outlets have taken, have already broadcasted this, so they've already picked up the traction, and they're sharing the excitement of cleaning up the streets. And again, thanks to you for bringing it to us. All we did was just, you know, just approve, but thanks to you for staying on.
It's wonderful to see something brand new come into a city, and, you know, it shines on all of you, so.
Exactly, yeah. So we will keep you posted, like I said, legal is fine to the, you know, they're doing their thing with the form and that's out.
And I also got to meet Mike downstairs many times. I'm going to miss all of you.
You can always come back.
I don't want to come back because I don't want, I'm not a complainer.
Well, a new program.
Yeah, we're a worker. So.
We appreciate you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for Mr.?
No, I just wanted to thank you because if you didn't have enough guidance possibly when you were asking questions, you know, leading up to this, the fact that you're bringing all the information from New Jersey that you just shared and adapting it to our environment, which is great, and the timing is perfect, because we got an email today about all the trash by the railroad tracks and if there can be a clearinghouse of sorts with the department you've obviously spoken with already with the city, then that in turn makes sure it's organized, and I picked up one of those, a formal mechanism and schedule, then it takes the pressure off you because you're doing such a great service for us. It's great to collaborate with somebody who knows what they're doing. So thank you very much.
And also with this program, it also takes the pressure off. My wife, Terry, and I, we've been out on many different occasions with Mark's group from Wycomico Clean. We've been on Johnson Road. I think they want to go out by Fuchs on the airport. We've been out by Danacoke Road. So what we're saying with the city adoption is that the green team with Christine and Mark and his Wycomico Clean, they don't need to go down whatever road that the city approves for adoption. That's done. And then if you get one, five, 10, eventually you're going to run out of roads, and that's the whole idea, is to keep the city as clean as possible.
Good. Again, thank you.
People want to know where to go to get this information. It sounds like administration has already set it up.
Yep.
So there's not a duplication, and people can, little well-oiled machine.
Yes, and they've already, you know, the communications team will roll it out and they'll make a big deal out of it, like Mr. Swagger said. So our director of communications is, so it'll be a big deal. So again, thank you, and we'll include you in on.
And again, I also appreciate Mayor, your cooperation on this whole program.
Yep.
Glad to do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
We're going to run out of trash, so.
Yes, we'll keep it tight. All right.
See you next week.
Yes.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll bring up our director of waterworks and our finance director for water and sewer presentation.
You want to do it or you want... He's going to bring up the slides on that. If you just wanted, like, you know, page through.
Oh, on that?
Yeah.
I thought you wanted some.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Ladies, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and your...
Which? Yeah, probably the air.
Your relation to this, say your name in relation to the city for the record, please.
Sandy Green, Director of Finance.
Corey Cameron, Director of Waterworks.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, good evening, council. This presentation is at the request of the council and administration to provide a basic overview of the Water and Sewer Fund, essentially a water sewer 101. So I'll try to keep it as straightforward as possible just to ensure everyone understands how the system works and how it is funded. So what is the Water Sewer Fund? The Water Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund, which means it's a self-supporting fund, operate it like a business. It does not rely on tax dollars. Instead, it is funded through the fees and charges paid by the users, air citizens and businesses, in exchange for the water and sewer services provided by the city. This next slide is basically how are the fees set. Fees are reviewed and set each year during the budget process, which includes open discussion and public meetings. Ultimately, the council approves the rates through an ordinance, which is posted online for transparency. And here on this slide, we show examples of where you can find them. They're posted on the city finance page, the ordinances for the water sewer rates. What do the fees pay for? Fees cover a range of expenses, including daily operations, which includes staff, energy, chemicals, routine maintenance, repairs and upgrades, capital improvement projects, often for aging infrastructure, and also debt service repayments on borrowed funds for past projects. These are some of the costs, these costs are some of the key drivers in determining the rates. The next slide is an example of one of the debt services impact, and if you remember this from the budget, in FY '29, the 2008 debt of $2 million is going to be paid off, and then our 2015 bond payment is going to increase significantly. It's going to go from $150,000 to $3.6 million. So that's basically a one and a half million dollar increase. So to avoid a sudden spike in rates, we aim to gradually increase rates in advance, allowing smoother transitions for our residents and businesses. This slide is just the financial health of the fund, and this is also a reminder from the audit that the Water Sewer Fund in FY '24 had a negative unrestricted fund balance of $3 million. This reflects a gap where revenues haven't kept up with expenses and liabilities exceed assets. One of the contributing factors is the growing cost of pension and post-employment benefits, which is calculated every year by an actuary. This slide represents the five-year capital improvement plan. This slide is the estimated capital needs for FY '26 to FY '30, and as you can see, the last column, the total is approximately $93 million that the Water and Sewer Fund is going to need for infrastructure projects. And Corey can probably speak more to this, but these are long-term projects which are essential to maintain our utility system. Did you want to add anything with that?
Well, I mean, you know, we have the couple large projects with the PFOS projects at the plants. There's some large wastewater projects on the other side that we're looking at, like some $5 million projects with replacing the force main across the river, replacing our downfall pipe, and it's just the cost of these projects, the longer we put them off, the more they keep going up. So that's a lot of it. These projects are just more and more expensive.
I don't want to stop the flow, but I have a couple questions, and I've been writing them down. But so you just mentioned about the projects and, you know, not completing them, and that the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. Do we have a collective or, you know, a list of projects that were completed, the time that they should have been completed? I think that'd help not only us, but residents realize that we're in this, I mean, I think everything's hitting at the, say, at one time. We've pushed things off as a city, not pointing fingers at any one person, administration, council, or, you know, any position, but I think we've reached a point where we've pushed the can down, where there's no other road left to push it down, and all of, looking at these large projects that they've been patched and fixed together. Do we have, and I'm not asking now if you need time, but kind of a list of like, okay, with this, we knew about at this, you know, around this time period, it should have been completed then, but we waited, and now here's the price point. I think that'll really help.
We can do that, but it's also not all that. There's also things coming in as we keep moving forward, you know, the maintenance, infrastructure maintenance, like we have the wastewater treatment plant that was this new $60 million project. Now it needs maintenance. It's not new anymore. You know, there's going to be future upgrades there, and we're done on the water side. So yes, to answer your question, I can get you some timelines, but some of these projects that are coming in are still, they're just coming in, they're infrastructure upgrades that need to be done.
Well, to that piece, if you just want to just list, like, here's everything, and I mean, I think that's, I mean, it's eye-opening, but everyone needs to see it, us, but also our 33,000 residents need to see that, hey, this is what we got going on. This is our laundry list of things. And that way, we're not just talking about, relating to the water sewer debt service slide about that. I know we kind of glazed over that, but can we make it a little more, like dumb it down a little bit more, because when folks see that, that we went from $150,000 to $3 million roughly, I believe that was the number, the figure you were saying, you know, I think we need to slow that down just a little bit so people understand the why and how that happened and that we had that planned from 2015.
Okay, and we're getting ready to get into FY '27, '31 CIP. We'll be going over these projects and.
I just want to, I just want to bring up also too, that the, since the pandemic, the cost of chemicals was a big hit on us, and then we got back-to-back with that with the PFOS issue and the filtration and that whole project coming. So there's a lot of things, even in the future, that are jacking a lot of this up beyond our control. State requirements and regulations are demanding that we have a higher rate of filtration and systems put in place, which we're planning for, and it costs money, right?
No money.
Right, right, exactly. So, thank you.
And this next slide, this is just what makes up the components of a utility bill. So our typical utility bill includes water charge, sewer charge, trash disposal. The trash actually goes to the general fund. It does not go to the water sewer fund, and it also has the bay restoration fee, which is a state mandated amount that gets sent to the state. So we also do not get that revenue for the bay restoration fee. Other water and sewer charges go into the water sewer fund, or only water and sewer charges go into the water sewer fund. Water usage is based on meter readings. Sewer is typically calculated from the same water reading. There are different rate structures for the in-city versus the outside the city, residential, commercial, and industrial, and city utility staff monitor for unusually high usage, which can indicate a leak, and they will investigate as needed. Some additional billing details, late fees and penalties can apply. Urban services are outside of the city limits, and they are billed by the county. Some customers only have sewer only. For small, commercial, and residential customers, the usage of 0 to 6,000 gallons per quarter is billed at a minimum charge, and the usage over 6,000 gallons is billed per 1,000 gallons used, and then the minimum does not apply in that case. Some other payment timeline and disconnection policy. Customers have 45 days to pay their bills. After 45 days, a 5% delinquent fee is added. An additional two-week grace period is given before disconnection, and at disconnection, a $50 admin fee is added. The full balance must be paid before you can be reconnected. And we actually allow more than many jurisdictions, and it's also important to note that having running water is a legal requirement. For high usage, so what do you do if you have high usage? High bills can result from leaks such as pipes and faucets and also seasonal use such as lawn irrigation. Customers can call a plumber or inspect themselves, and we also offer a leak adjustment policy under Resolution 3030, which may provide a partial credit depending on the situation. And some of the other assistance programs that we have, we have a water incentive, which is the WIN program for eligible households, and this provides up to $2,000 per year to assist with bills. As I know that they've asked in the past, like, different things that the customers can do for help with their utility bills. And of course, any more information that you need on the water sewer rates, they can be found on the city finance webpage. And of course, to report any main breaks or sewer stoppages, you can always call our finance number at 410-548-3103 during regular business hours. Do you have any more questions?
Nicely done, and thank you.
I think one of the things we wanted to point out was what you mentioned earlier was.
what you mentioned earlier was years and years ago when we did the second round of the sewer upgrade, with replacing the one that didn't work, the state gave us a deferment of sorts, gave us 0%. And then, of course, that loan now has become, within the, it was two more years or one more year?
In 2029, I believe.
Okay, two more years.
Because it was going to start this year, they would have overlapped. And we got an extension so that they didn't overlap. But still, it's going to go up about a million and a half more dollars after the one comes off.
Right, so net, net. So that's net. And that's the equivalent of like 19 or 20 million dollars in 20 year-end worth of money. So that's a huge hit for us. I mean, had that not been a reality, we could have been sitting pretty as related to PFOS in terms of cash flow. But so that, just wanted to make that point. We're doing well. We've got challenges, but that one is a challenge right there, so.
Thank you for that. Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Well done.
Some of the CIP stuff.
Yes. Thank you.
Leave it, you can stay up here for the PFOS.
Yeah, you guys are, yeah, you guys are here for.
Your one again.
The duration.
So we have an ordinance authorizing a budget amendment for transfer of PFOS proceeds. So whenever you all are ready.
Okay, this is an ordinance in preparation of the FY 26 budget. If you remember, we budgeted $2 million in revenue, which was forecasted from the PFOS settlement lawsuit proceeds. This revenue was originally allocated to the Water Sewer Fund. And upon further review, it has been determined that these proceeds would be more appropriately accounted for in the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund as their use aligns with capital project purposes. So attached is an ordinance requesting a budget amendment to reallocate the $2 million in anticipated PFOS lawsuit proceeds from the Water Sewer Fund to the Water Sewer Capital Fund. And then we're going, asking to shift the 1.5 that we had in the PEGO projects originally approved under the FY 26 budget to be funded with the lawsuit proceeds. And this is actually a difference of $469,900 that would need to be recorded as a use of surplus from the Water Sewer Fund, which will be transferred to the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund. And we're going to assign that, asking to assign that to the PFOS filter project to support its continued development. And Corey can also speak more to that. Going forward, this would save us from asking for another ordinance to take money from surplus for the PFOS because we're going to have to upfront some of that cost for the PFOS before we actually apply for and get the loan proceeds. So once the loan proceeds come in, then we would be able to reimburse ourselves for any costs that are put forth before we settle on the loan. Isn't that how that usually works?
Same as.
Talked about the home MD loan yet. It's not truly official till October. But yeah, we're getting some funding from, through the state revolving loan fund for this.
Okay, so this, you're saying that this 469 would help offset in.
Often, some of the.
For the forward funds?
To provide.
Put forward.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? No, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. We're moving forward to ordinance authorizing a budget amendment for the mayor to appropriate funds for the FY 26 general fund, water sewer fund, parking fund, and stormwater fund for additional salaries and fringe associated with union negotiation. Oh, yes, you're not here for, sorry. I thought you were here for, I thought you were here for it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cameron, thank you. Are you, are you on your own for this one?
Yeah.
All right.
On June 16th of 2025, Resolution 3414 was approved. And this included three union side letters resulting from wage reopeners negotiations across all three collective bargaining agreements. These agreements have resulted in wage increases that were not included in the originally adopted FY 26 budget. The fiscal impact of this, initially, the FY 26 budget provided for a one-step salary increase in July of 2025, and then another one-step salary increase in January of 2026. Following union negotiations, an additional step increase was implemented in July of 2025. Additionally, the fire department pay scale was modified, increasing step increments from 2% to 2.25%. These changes have resulted in an unbudgeted cost across several city funds. The general fund, $1,187,953. Water Sewer Fund, 143,566. Stormwater Fund, 2,0949. And the parking fund, 2,0316, for a total of $1,336,784. Attached is an ordinance requesting approval of a budget amendment to appropriate this additional $1,336,784 in FY 26 across the general fund, water sewer fund, stormwater fund, and parking fund to cover the cost of the additional salaries and related fringe benefits.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions regarding this budget amendment?
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we discussed all this before, so.
I would like to recommend administration and Sandy, you could address this better. I think we need to do some kind of a calendar change for input regarding and have the negotiations. We have more information on what's going on and what is being asked of us before the budget. Because what's happened is, as you had just said, the budget was set, and then after the fact, it has to be changed. If I had my way, everybody that works for this city, any of the unions would have whatever they wanted. But it has to be fiscally responsible, and we have to be able to afford it. If we don't have the money, it doesn't get done. And so I would like to request that we do a change on the calendar as far as dealing with these negotiations, first of all. And then is there some way that we are able to, when we're dealing with collective bargaining in the code, put up some guidelines? In other words, if we don't have the money, we cannot meet these requests. Is that possible to have something like that done? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking. I see Meg in the corner. If you have any suggestions how to remedy this? Because I don't see this, if we do this every year, we can't manage.
Yes, thank you, Counselwoman. That's, administration's been talking about that. That's a very great segue, good segue, to what that administration's kind of been, the path that it wanted to take. I don't know if you all want to address this now, but I think that is the plan or that's the thought that, you know, and we've been talking about this, but, you know, in the how. And it's, but do you want to speak to the challenges when it comes to that? And the relation to this and that, you know, kind of, if we want to take a step back three, four, whenever the unions were started, as far as the timing, but.
As for the first discussion point you brought up about the calendar year, it would be helpful if we could change that. Right now, the way the labor code is written, it says that we'll negotiate from October to, I believe, it's January. That's not enough time because we don't know what the city's budget is going to be. So for instance, this year, luckily, all three unions were agreeable, and we were able to push them off until we had more information. So truthfully, we really did not meet with them until probably February or March, when we had a better idea. So that would be beneficial, I think, not just for the city, but also for the unions. If we could look into changing that, maybe begin it, if you want to say January. Sure, we still don't have a lot of information, but at least move it to the beginning of the new calendar year would be helpful.
But that, and that works really well. Especially, and I know administration, that was one of your goals, but to make sure that their budget is also what the CIP is. So that, but again, this past year, we had a lot of pieces that were not aligned. But I know that we've discussed that. And so that, you know, you all have, and the mayor, that was one of your goals. And we appreciate that, to make sure that CIP is ready to go. So it's, again, those are all pieces. But I think we've had some interesting, you know, again, things have been thrown at us, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, that would be helpful if maybe we would consider that. As for the other piece to your question about, you know, the wages, there's a couple of different options you could consider. One would be you could cap it. You could use a formula to base it off of a percentage of revenue. You could do a guaranteed percent increase of one step as long as you've got projected growth to exceed the prior year. The other thing is you could make arbitration awards subject to council approval. So that way, you know, you guys would have some input to that as well. Last resort, you could remove it from the labor code.
So we're really looking at language that says binding and non-binding are in that realm. So, so right now, it's saying that we're.
Binding.
Binding. So you're looking at what it would look like and how we would word it for non-binding agreement. Okay.
Answer.
Yeah, that helps. I mean, it comes back to if we have to keep finding money, then that's putting the cart before the horse when we're saying we have to have this, but we don't have the money to fund this. So if we can avoid that issue, everybody knows what they're dealing with, and we move on from there.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're going to deal with this in future council meetings. But I think one of the things that happened this year, and Sandy can verify it, you know, in order to maintain a raise, you did have corresponding revenue to support it. And I think we've dug into the surplus this year to make that happen from, based on the side letters. And that's not, that's not good, obviously, good economics. But so we need to tweak it a little bit. I think like to your point, you know, we want to take care of our people. End of the day, it's obviously the union has been an extremely expensive journey of negotiation and pathway. So we need to figure out a pathway where we're, you know, we really need to be increasing our infrastructure dollars every year. And there's other things that are claiming our money. And so we're, we need to take a real hard look at it. And I think some of the suggestions she threw out were good. But I think we need to take a peek at it.
Thank you, Meg, appreciate that. Sandy, thank you.
Just so we can, are there any of those, I mean, any of those suggestions that we're leaning more towards? Or that you kind of?
I think we should be open to anything. I mean, I think just the accomplishments of the goal. But I mean, I think the last two years have been, you know, they're at one end of the pool, and we're at the other end of the pool. And we're going to threaten to spend a bunch of money in legal fees just to settle it. That's not a productive way to go. I think also, and this is just me, kind of, I think the union, with all its benefits for the employees, has created an environment where it's kind of like management and employees that kind of pitted against each other a little bit. I don't think it's healthy. And so I think we can do, we can accomplish the core goal of taking care and respecting our people and giving them, you know, effective rate raises without having all that going on. And I think we can accomplish both.
So we can actually, as far as an action item, we can work on changing the calendar first, right? That's something that.
Yeah, and as a part of that, we'll talk about the other stuff as well.
And then figure out with your input, Meg, and yours as well, Sandy, some of the options that Meg mentioned that might be viable to address in the next year.
Yeah, but let's talk about the timeline if we want to do that this year. If you all want to speak to that, because I think, again, October, that's.
Yes.
That's less than 60.
Right.
Mid, so if we want to talk about the timeline and what that means if we want to make that effective for next year.
If that's something you were interested in doing, we would just want to move quickly on that.
Like next meeting quickly?
Yes.
Yes.
Agreed.
So it sounds like we'll get some information from you all in a very short time to weigh the, our options. Is that for both items or just the timing piece? Are you all going to have the, are you bringing forth options for the change to unions or just the timeline?
I think the timeline, we'll start with there. I think the other pieces will take a little bit more digesting. We got to dig into the numbers a little bit more.
It was just a question. I had an idea, but it was just a question.
No, I agree, because you don't want to do it halfway. In other words, you get the timeline straight, and then you take the time to make sure you make the correct decision. Because, you know, we're talking about people's livelihoods and everything else that's important.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
The current, the current agreement with the unions is two or three years?
Two years.
Okay, so two years. So that buys us a little bit more leeway than.
Yes, if we're able to change the calendar year, or change it soon, then.
We can do that.
Yes, what we would do is we would start negotiations in the spring because the current contracts are good for fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26.
Okay, so I guess it's a little breathing room to digest if we're going to be going the other directions that you're, that we've talked about here.
I keep hearing about this two-year agreement, but every time I'm turning around, we're negotiating.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you said that because in my mind, I was thinking, so can you explain? Because, yeah.
So when we, when we first met and negotiated wages, we could only come to an agreement for the first fiscal year. So that is how the side letters came about. Technically, the contract was a done deal. Everything was a go with that. It was set in stone for the two years. It's just to work on agreeing to wages, that's why we only opened, we had a wage reopeners only with the wages. So that is how these side letters came about. That is how we ended up bargaining and negotiating this year.
So moving forward this year, what will we be discussing and negotiating?
Everything again, because these contracts, I know, these contracts are only good for fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26.
You see the theme we got going here?
I'm going to think about that hard, I'm going to think about that real hard later on.
It's a two-year program.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's a two-year program.
But every year, you're going to discuss wages.
No, 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 not always. We do not have to.
So let's move forward to 20, this is 546.
Fiscal year '27, fiscal year '28. If we're able to come to an agreement within these contracts and with the wages, then it's possible we do not have to have a wage reopeners.
That is the, okay, so we're all looking for, is that you?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you for, yeah, that.
It is important for people to understand the timelines and the way it's structured. Thank you.
Sure.
So it sounds like we have some homework for next meeting. We look forward to seeing that and to our pathway moving forward. Back, Counsel, any questions relating to this budget amendment? This, no.
I took care of mine.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
To this budget amendment, again, that we discussed in budget, we knew that, you know, again, there was a figure. Any questions on this particular budget amendment moving forward? No?
None.
Do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Ms. Katon.
Thank you very much.
While they take their seat, while Mr. Demone is getting the timer situated, again, if any member of the public is wishing to speak on any of the agenda items, we welcome you to the podium at this time. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name. And if you are a city resident, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Get the timer up. Let me get the timer up just to make sure everything's, okay? Thank you, Mr. Langford. I just want everything to be.
No, you're totally fine.
Okay, I appreciate it.
See, I was going to let you have that 30 seconds to.
One more second to go out of. One more second.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, sorry. Yes.
So.
Folks.
Hold on, I got to start over. I want to start over.
I appreciate you. Okay, so, all right, Michael Langford. I'm a city resident at 1026 Arthur Court. I guess I just wanted to share some thoughts about like what we were just discussing with the Water and City, as well as like the union contract. So the timeline thing, it's like, I can't help but think about how like Ann Street wasn't funded, and they didn't think about how that was going to function, right? And so the person who's responsible for that is like always management. So at the time, it's Jake Day. And it's just like he put in place Ann Street, and it doesn't function. And we're probably going to have to shut it down. doesn't function, and we're probably going to have to shut it down, and it's a horrible thing because we can't afford it. Likewise, he also came up with this Cockamamie scheme of a two-year contract, but every year, the reason the city does the budget sessions what it does is because it's after the state, because we don't have any money without the state, because the city doesn't have enough money. So it's like, how can you negotiate contracts with a lack of data, with a lack of information, without the budget information of the state? So even just the, Jake setting it up so that the union is negotiating in October is bad management. It's just like a bad idea. It's like bad oversight. Like anybody actually doing project management, running a business, like can see that. So I kind of commend you guys for addressing kind of some of those issues. You know, you guys aren't attributing blame, but I would say that like, in order to fix it, it's like you have to really call out that this is the problem, that it's not actually like functioning as a full system. I also want to be wary of like, so the two-year contract with the union seems wild, and as Randy pointed out, like, you know, we're negotiating every year, doesn't make sense. Also, it really puts us in a position to where like, if certain departments strike, then it's like, if there's a trash strike, right, and people aren't getting stuff picked up, it's like people are really at the mercy then, and then it's like consumers have to pay a lot of money. It can cause public health issues. And one of the things I, I used to work for Piedmont Airlines, you know, and they have really strong unions, which can be really great for the quality, but also it means that sometimes pilots don't fly planes because the autopilot is broken, but they're pilots. They're men who fly planes, but they don't fly them. Why? Because the union holds them over a barrel and they can do whatever they want. In this city with the union is really in, you know, I'm generally a person who's in favor of unions as far as theoretically, but it's like we're really, when we want to think about power dynamics and structure, the idea that we could negotiate a two-year contract with people when we can't actually keep our word to them as a city because we don't know what will happen in the state the following year, seems like there needs to be some serious amendments to make that function. The other thing, I'm running out of time, but I can't drink the city water, so I'm just saying I have an extra filter because like it, it can make you sick. So it's still not like where it needs to be. And then I really think that instead of, if there's increases in wages, we should put more on commercial accounts on businesses than we should residents, because they're using more, and if we increase their rates, it's like they don't have anywhere to go to make their commercial sprinkler systems work.
It's not me ringing in.
No, you're good. You're totally good. You're totally good. You're totally good. No, thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the above items?
Well, first of all, the water and sewer has always been a problem, and it's a problem kind of like Nissan or Volkswagen. They're all going under because they're big capital-intensive companies and they're not selling their cars. Well, just like he said, I can't drink my water, and one of the reasons I moved to Salisbury was because I didn't want, I can't drink well water. So anyway, and as far as unions go, they have pension plans. Why aren't we doing something innovative with the pension plan for, the dinosaur pension plans that cities have and transfer them to 401Ks or make a contribution, make the employees make contribution to the union? Okay, enough of that. I would say it's great now we have a union involved in city affairs. Unions are fine, but they are instruments of private business where there is a profit incentive and workers desire leverage when profits are large and unfairly distributed. Government is not supposed to have a profit incentive, but should have a service and efficiency motive. So now there's a union, and the first year of its infiltration, the city employees have improved their productivity by 1.4 million dollars. I know that not to be true. That's like city council cutting the number of sessions they attend per month in half and not cutting their salaries in half. How do I and the taxpayers get 100% salary increase for doing 100% less work? No matter what an accounting firm or municipal organization tells you, there should be no surpluses anywhere in government financials. Surpluses mean you are overtaxing the citizens and deficits mean you are overspending. The fiscal impact of this collective bargaining agreements for the current year 2026 is as follows. The ordinance requesting approval of budget amendment for 2026 for the general fund, water, sewer, blah, 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 in an amount of 1.3-plus million dollars for additional salaries and related fringe benefits. Where's the money going to come from? How much are the fees and taxes going up? As well as all of the horrible mismanagement of the water and sewer funds, and I'll say it, since Jake Day and Jackie.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak on the above items? All right, seeing none, we'll pivot to administration comments.
All right. I just want to give a shout out to the police department. They had a wonderful national night out, so thank you to them. Thank you, everybody, for showing up, and thank you for all the volunteers that came out and supported a great event. I will remind everybody, third Friday is this Friday, so hope to see everybody out in the streets. It's disco theme, so wear some glitter and have fun. It's also the first event in downtown that'll feature the new TAPS program. It's to-go alcohol in public spaces. This is where you can go into some of the fine establishments downtown and grab a drink, walk around the street, and enjoy the festival. Make sure you get ID'd, you make sure you get checked, make sure you're in the right cup, though, so, but have a good time. And last, but not least, it's been a long time coming, but starting next Monday, all through the week, is the Carroll Street project.
Yes.
That's been on, that's been in queue for a while.
Yes, that was on my announcement.
So you will see some repaving and restriping.
The 22nd.
Exactly.
Yes, expect a lease.
Does that person still work here?
Mr. Smith.
But it's a good project. It's long overdue, and we're excited to see it over the line. The road will not be closed. There's going to be flaggers helping everybody, so Title Health and everybody can still have access and the bank and everything, so.
Have you notified Andy so I don't have to mention it ever again?
I have not. I'm sure he knows.
He'll see it when he comes to town.
Randy's going to wake up in cold sweat in the middle of the night hearing you.
Sharon's at it again.
Yeah, I want to shout out to Alan and, and to Michael O. and for their new assignments and Felicia as well. And hopefully here in the next few weeks, we'll be announcing the same and swearing in the new city administrator. So we've had, I think we're down to four candidates possibly, and we're going to be doing the final interviews here in the next couple of weeks, and so it's a good thing we're filling back in from where we had some deficits, so it's going, is hopefully, well, we're just good, so. I'm excited to have everybody back in the chair, and we're all getting set up, so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Mayor. Moving forward to council comments, council members.
I just want to thank Alan and the field ops team and everybody for getting on that sidewalk for access to the park. It has been a long time coming. It's been on my bucket list for ever and a day. You want to talk about Carroll Street, I've been trying to get this little piece of sidewalk done for about five years now, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the additional parking there for, you know, disabled parking, so folks who use mobility devices will be able to access the park safely and easily. So I really greatly appreciate that. I'm very sorry I missed National Night Out. You did not want me there. I had a nasty tummy bug of some sort, so I skipped that one, unfortunately. I did miss it very much. It's always a good time, so, but it looked like everybody had a lot of fun, so I'm glad it went well.
Thank you, council member Gregory. Council members.
Well, of course, I was going to mention the Carroll Street. I was like, oh my gosh, Councilwoman DeShille, guess what? We have, we have a gift. We have a gift coming. And of course, it was all, it's all lit up and flashed up on Carroll Street, so we were definitely excited. I mean, I'm sure you were. Thank you. That's, that's good. We're all looking forward to the restriping and redesign of that. That's very nice. Of course, everyone's mentioned about the, the activities and thing. That's great. I just want to mention, just to make sure, and just in case you didn't hear it in the news, that the blood bank is open on Mount Herman Road. Yay. Every pint that's donated, you could save up to three lives. You can call them directly for an appointment. It's 888-825-6638. It's very important. Of course, this area always runs low. Please consider donation, including organ, tissue donations as well. And donate plasma. People need plasma. So that's my big, my big spiel. I'm sure that Mr. DeShille has.
Is that building they were in?
Yes, they're in the same place on Mount Herman Road, the same, the same facility. Thank you for asking.
Educate me. How do you, how do you give plasma? Is it like giving blood? I mean, how do you do that?
Actually, I, I can't tell you, I'm not a medical person, but what I will tell you, it's a longer process.
Okay.
And it's they, when they draw the blood, there's like a, a machine that sorts out the blood and the plasma.
Okay.
And it's, it's very, it's like over an hour or something it gets done. And you can see it in the machine. Now, that's the best I can describe it.
Okay.
Do you use plasma for?
Well.
I'm a person. We'll, we'll get a nurse in and tell you that.
Yeah, thank you.
But I'm for one, I'm for one who can't donate plasma. I'm the one who always needs plasma. And it's a, it's, it's in your blood, it's something that you need, but I'm going to get a nurse to talk about it. That's what we should focus on, is that, how that, exactly what that is. But many people do need plasma, so just donate, 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 and consider donating.
Thank you, Council Vice President. And yes, we did mention it last meeting, at the, at the last meeting, because we got that email about the eastern shore being critically low, so thank you for that.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeShille, you have anything?
Yes, National Night Out, it was fabulous, even in the rain, and I would like to thank administration and Mayor Taylor for getting back to, we all got a letter about the bridge at the park, how dangerous it actually is, and we had somebody write and complimented everybody on National Night Out, but also the concern over the bridge since it is an icon here, quite frankly. And Mayor Taylor addressed it and answered her right away so that I didn't have to respond, and it is on the schedule, and there are a lot of hoops. It's like anything else, there are far more hoops than sending our wonderful worker bees out there just to fix it. You have the historical committee that has to have a say in it, then you have materials and permits and things like that, so it's more than a notion, but thank you, thank you for that. The fire academy, holy cow. I'm signing up next year, but I'm going to the younger one. I'm going to the seven to 12, because this past week, it was for the older kids. Well, let me tell you just real briefly, I promise, honest, put the timer on for me. First of all, I want you to know they have built their.
I'm you.
Yeah, I'm, I'll go along with it, Riley, trust me. The maze that they have for these kids to go through with all the equipment and everything, they built themselves, and it is monitored the entire time. There is a bleeding station where it stopped, it's a simulated bleeding activity that one of the firemen actually created this to do as well. The ambulance, the kids figured out how to do immobilization, although we did laugh because they put one of the backboards under one of the other kids, and he put his leg straight up, so Rob and I both looked at each other and said, broken back. Anyway, so they learned to do that, and then I was shown how they drill into the bone marrow if they need to get directly into the bone marrow. They went to the 911 center, and then they went down the dive team. And the issue here, and I'm going to just put a plug and additional plug, because I know people think that if the firemen aren't out for a fire, that they're sitting, eating bonbons or, you know, doing something in the fire station. They are constantly doing more educational, they have opportunities for that, especially now with Zoom, they're studying, they're fixing things. They each have so many different abilities that they use these abilities, whether they are able to build, whether they're able to do mechanics, this type of thing. So on any given day, you will not see them sitting in the lounge. They are all, you know, getting together and doing things. So thank you for that, Chief Frampton. That was great. I might sign up, but I don't know. We'll see. Update, just on the airport, I had a meeting today, and I bet you did not know that we have somebody renting a hangar out there. It's called Hop Flight, and it is aerospace startup developing long-range hybrid electric drones. Their goal is to create a four-passenger air taxi. Other states, California is way ahead on this particular project, but to have it right here with the drones that are 10 feet wide and they're practicing with them, and they're hoping at some point that it can be used for spraying agriculture, which would be specific to our area. And to hear the guys talk about it, this one gentleman that was presenting it, it just, it's amazing. They practice with vertical takeoff and landing, and it's, the, the reason, now this is just a little tidbit, if you have someone, if you have a, an emergency out for a boat and they need a particular piece of equipment to fix whatever's broken down on the boat, that getting a helicopter out there is quite expensive. You can take a robot, I mean, a drone out there for a lot less, and it can be fast and it can meet the, not from here, but just as an example, he shared that with us. And the flight school is having their ribbon cutting in September, so I think that might be all on my list. Am I time up yet? Oh, she's gone. Okay. I do have one other thing. I would like, I would like, it's not about me, but I would like some of the questions that I presented or thoughts that I presented in the housing presentation last time, if we could actually really sit down as a group and come up with some, especially Alan's on board now, so we'll get some new directions and get some new input, new eyes on the prize, and come up with some actionable questions that we can start addressing instead of just a black hole where it comes up and it's never to be seen again. So, thank you, thank you. Is that it? Where's it? Ooh, no.
Thank you, council members, yes.
Try the rest of your time.
I share, but I'm not allowed to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, and thank you, administration. I don't really have much to, just to echo the same thoughts again, last, last week, the National Night Out, that was a blast, and again, thank you to all. It is, I brag to everyone that we have the best one. You just see, when you just pull up, you can just feel the energy of the air, and even if with the drizzle, it'd draw people away. Exactly, it was awesome. Councilwoman DeShille was back there, she was slinging hot dogs and chips and everything, and, and, you know, our clerk was, was over there on, on bike duty. I still have a junior huffy, I think that's back there somewhere for me.
Is that for you?
Yes, yes, but no, it's, again, the kids, just to see the kids in the community come out, it is amazing, and all the, all the partners. So again, thank you all, whoever had their, you know, you know, their hand in that, thank you all. And again, same day, just to see, I went and visited the Junior Fire Academy over at the 911 center, and, you know, with the kids, and they were thrilled, but then to see our same gentlemen and gentle, gentlewomen there helping with the fire academy, and then to go help out in our community, do National Night Out, again, the time that that takes and the efforts of helping our community, it is, it is, you know, unmatched here. So again, thank you all. I'd like to just go and just, again, sit in the back and just kind of just, just spectate, and it was remarkable. To say also, our 911 center at the, with the county, working with our city, they're, the system that they have, I don't know if, you know, that can be open to the public, but to see that, to see behind the scenes and how fluid that just goes, just, it is remarkable. So again, you know, that's, all those pieces work into when it comes to, you know, you all that save lives and that help make sure people are here to tell the stories, all those pieces are mapped out. So again, thank you to you all. We will see you all again in two weeks. Keep sharing, keep, keep, keep coming, keep commenting, these, all these, these comments from you all, they definitely help in shape, you know, how we move forward, so we appreciate you all. And until next time, thank you.
Don't forget, it's work.
Thank you.